Good evening. I would like to call to order the Oregon City Council Regular Meeting for September 8th of 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're going to have a moment of silence afterwards.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the moment of silence. Thank you. The moment of silence for was for tonight was for Don Charlton, who passed away over the weekend. Don was called by some people here in Oregon, Mr. Oregon, due to all of the organizations he chaired and was on. So our condolences to the Charlton family. Next, Ms. Snyder, would you please take a roll call vote of council members present?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Horniak?
Here.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Here.
Mr. Reeves?
Here.
Mr. Salander?
Here.
Mr. Wallensack?
Here.
Please note, all members of council are in attendance tonight. Also present at tonight's meeting is Mayor Seferian, our city administrator, Mr. Major, our clerk of council, Ms. Snyder, our law director, Ms. Papora, public service director, Paul Roman, chief, police chief, Brandon Beegan, our assistant police chief, Ryan Spangler, our fire chief, Clayton O'Brien, our assistant fire chief, Mark Mullins, and our finance director, Nick Roman. Our next order of business tonight is to approve the meeting minutes from the August 25th, 2025, regular council meeting. Council.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Horniak.
I move to accept the minutes of the August 25th, 2025, regular council meeting as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. We have a motion by Mr. Horniak, second by Mr. Drake. Does anyone have any objections? Hearing none, meeting minutes are accepted as presented. Before we move forward, I asked Chief O'Brien if he would please give us an update from the Eden Park school bus accident and the incident that happened with that, if you would, please. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, last Wednesday, we did have a unique incident with a school bus crash that happened after school. And what was unique about this was when the caller dialed 911, the 911 call came into City Hall. That number was answered twice here at City Hall. We ended up getting a call from Kelly stating that the caller was calling 911 and wasn't sure why it wasn't going to our local dispatch. So tried to do a little bit of research on why and what happened in this case. So I got ahold of Stacy, who's in charge of the ARCOG down at Lucas County, and she'd stated that Verizon actually had a fiber line that was cut, and this fiber line was cut to the east. It did affect multiple different counties. And so when the fiber line was cut, Verizon needed to grab the 10-digit, old 10-digit numbers, which would be the old PSAP numbers, and then forward them to the ARCOG. So when Verizon went to do that, they grabbed only the 10-digit PSAP number from Toledo. So all the other 10-digit PSAP numbers that were to our local were not grabbed at that time. So at the time that bus crash happened, when they got, when they dialed 911, it was going to essentially going over to this old rollover number when 911 wasn't being picked up. So by the time they discovered that Verizon didn't grab all the PSAP numbers, they were able to get back ahold of Verizon and say, you have to grab all of the PSAPs that were before coming into the ARCOG. This goes all the way back to what Stacy said, even Ottawa Hills numbers and things. So once they discovered that, they were able to get all the numbers back to it, and it mainly affected all Verizon callers because it was Verizon fiber. However, just to kind of put a little bit more into it, that it did affect all Verizon callers, but also would have affected some other, maybe T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, or any other types of callers on a different network. Because when you dial 911, that it has to be a shared wireless connection between anybody's tower. So if somebody from the AT&amp;T network would have called 911 at that time, if it doesn't pick up a close AT&amp;T tower, Verizon has to give permission rights for that AT&amp;T caller to use the Verizon tower for that 911 call to come over. So although it was a Verizon fiber and was all Verizon customers at that time, it could have affected some other individuals at that time. For us locally, it affected, you know, that bus crash for that specific call for us. Now, it was, ended up being resolved, I think, what Stacy said was 3:30 in the morning, when it finally became completely resolved where the fiber line was actually fixed and completed. But this wasn't a directly, you know, it was just the ARCOG responding to however they could make, you know, the reactions after finding out the Verizon fiber was cut, so.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody from the administration? No? Council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Drake.
Chief O'Brien, did Stacy, when you talked to her, have they had other incidences like this, or is it common with the cell phones to not work properly? Because, I mean, you know, what you just said sounds pretty spooky to me. I believe it's been around for about four years now, and, you know, I know nothing's perfect, but just out of curiosity, has there been other incidents?
Mr. President, Mr. Drake, that this, this was the first incident that she's experienced with this specific type of the fiber line going down, because I asked that same question. I said, and what, what kind of things are being done so that doesn't happen in the future? And so she had talked about, you know, down the road, and I think they talk about it in a lot of the ARCOG meetings, that potentially at the 2027 mark is when they're talking about the redundancies of having to be onboard with the state, and I don't know all about that. I know that they, they've had a lot of those conversations, but in the future, that if that was to ever happen, instead of it not being able to roll over to that dispatch center, it would go over to a second, complete redundant system that's not in the same, same location. But I, I don't know all the details, but she definitely did say that that was, this would be a prime example of why that would be important, that that goes that way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Our first item on the agenda is persons and delegations. We have two people that have signed in. Laura Davis, if you would please name and come up to the microphone. You can adjust that, it should, should be able to pick it up now, since it's a new one. And name and address for the record, please.
Laura Davis, 5494 Bay Show Road. The big not-so-beautiful box. Did you know that there are 173 data centers in the state of Ohio? Virginia has 300 data centers. Why? How many are too many? I am here in front of you again regarding the data center. I feel the eye rolls and the oh-no, here she is again looks. It's okay. I am not ashamed of fighting for what I believe in. I was a union steward with UAW Local 12 for 15 years. I handled grievances and negotiated contracts. I was also very involved in Ask Me Local 7 when I worked for the city of Toledo. Held a positional trustee, and I was a union steward when I retired in 2022. I stick up for people and fight for issues I care about. That is what I do. I am not here now for my own personal agenda. I am here on behalf of Oregon citizens. I am here for the citizens who don't even know that there is a council meeting tonight. Some do not even know about the proposed gigantic box that could be constructed on farmland near many residential neighborhoods. I am not only here for those people living in quiet, living quiet lives in our peaceful community, I am also speaking for those who think it is a done deal. Citizens have been led to believe that the city is in dire straits. The financial records are available online. The schools are thriving and functioning. Dire straits, I feel, is an exaggerated term to convince people that this data center is needed for the city to survive. If there is a short-term financial crisis or dire straits, do you realize that it will take years for this money to start flowing? We all could use more money. Who wouldn't like to win the Powerball lottery? But if not, we will continue to budget with the money we have. City council and the mayor want a data center. Oregon does not need a data center. What Oregon needs right now is to be well-informed about what is really going on. Therefore, I am asking for a public forum where everyone can come and hear information for themselves. I am suggesting that it be held in a separate day other than the regular council meeting. It should be at a larger venue such as the high school auditorium. For those, those for and against should have opportunity to do a presentation. The public has been kept in the dark for too long. Speaking of being kept in the dark, I was in Bowling Green over the weekend. The huge newly constructed data center is next to the Meyer store. It was lit up like a Christmas tree. It lit up the whole area with large, bright white lights, as well as flashing red and green lights. Who would want to live next door to that? As city council members and mayor, you were all elected by citizens to act in the best interest of the citizens. I ask all of you now to imagine living next to the data center. The bright lights, constant humming, low water pressure, higher electric rates, is this what you want for your own family? For a minute, put aside the thoughts of the minimal payment, the minimal payment in lieu of taxes. Make a mental list of the pros and cons. What environment would you choose for your own families? When the public elected you, did they expect you, expect to have the city inundated with industrial smoke stacks and huge obnoxious data centers? With the November election approaching, now is the time for a decision to maintain our peaceful, family-oriented environment, or give in to the greedy developers. Now imagine yourself in a voting booth as a citizen. Who would you vote for, knowing the adverse economic and environmental effects on the community if the data center goes through? If you care about our city and the future well-being of the citizens, now is the time to back out of the deal. You, do you, do what you would do for your own families. And then also, my husband wrote an article, an article editor letter in the Metro Press, if you want to check it out. It's very informative.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Fran Wilber, if you would, Fran, please come up, name and address for the record.
Frances Wilber, 3226 Northeast Morland Drive, Oregon. I'm here, of course, to talk about the data center. Of course, my first question, have we done any studies yet on noise, environmental, water, any of that? That, because that is what's important to your citizens, that they know that they're always going to have water and electric. And that's where the transparency comes in. If we could have seen, because when you look online, I looked at a mega one, it's huge. And a lot of them start out small, just like we're supposed to have. So, you know, that, but again, we don't have any inspections. You guys, at first, we're talking, we, when I first started coming, it was about the audits. Talked about that forever. Then we talked for months about the roundabouts. And I did have a friend ask me, what are they trying to distract us from? Then, in this room, the data center did start. I believe you guys had said we had 30 or 45 days, you guys had to vote on it, and up until that point, I didn't know a lot about a data center. We didn't live here for a few years, so apparently, when you guys talked about that, I did not Now, after you dropped that on us, at the end of the meeting, I believe the mayor said, we are all thinking data center is a building. I am, I'm thinking it's just a building. And he informed, he said, there's going to be eight buildings, eight buildings at 200,000 square feet. Somehow, that doesn't equal what all of us are pitching in our mind. That's why we need to see it. We need to see. If it's small, I can honestly tell you, if you guys would have brought a picture, if we would have had a presentation, you wouldn't have the opposition you have right now. Because I know you wouldn't, me. I mean, I just, that's, and the continued unwanted sound is a major, so it's stress, so get ready, guys, your wives are not going to be happy. Can lead to irability, high blood pressure, cognitive events, effects, can impair concentration, memory, and productivity because it's constant. Like, everybody says, well, when we talk at 70 decimals, that's true, but we stop. It's not continuous. You all know that, if I'm an anxious person like me, I'm going to talk my whole five minutes. So you're going to hear that your whole five minutes, I'm up here. I just, I read a study in Chicago, they linked higher residential noise levels to an increased risk of cognitive impairment. Heart melabolic diseases, chronic noise exposure can risk heart disease, high blood pressure, type 2 diabetes, CLPD from the air condition, mental illness from the constant, long-term exposure noise, depression and anxiety. It's also bringing in the fact of our birds, because it's going to change.
One minute left.
Okay. The constant noise disrupts the bird migrations due to the intense light and electromagnetic navigation, navigation, noise and pollution. While the data center is not winter by its combination of a trap that can disorient birds, data centers altogether are responsible for an estimated 365 million to 1 million bird deaths annually, annually in the US alone. What are we going to do about all of our birds? Are we going to lose that revenue? I mean, I don't know. Because I don't know how many, I don't know anything about that, but I worry we're going to lose that revenue, too. And is that worth it? We're going to lose some businesses. Thank you, time's up.
Thank you, Fran. Council, we need to add items 149 through 155 of 2025 to tonight's agenda. Can I seek a motion to add these items to the agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniak.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Horniak.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Pauloff. Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Council, are there any objections? Hearing none, items 149 of 2025 and through 155 of 2025 have been added to tonight's agenda. The net, first item on the agenda for consideration and passage is item 149 of 2025, presented by Mayor Seferian and our police chief, Brandon Beegan. Chief Beegan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is necessary to enter into an agreement with the Lucas County Sheriff's Office, who would be the lead agency on a grant, on grant funding that they've received through the Department, Ohio Department of Public Safety and the Governor's Highway Safety Office. This grant provides funds for local agencies in Lucas County to provide OVI detection services, so OVI checkpoints and saturated patrols to get drunk and drug drivers off the roadway. Any involvement with Oregon Police Division would be reimbursed fully for their wages during that time, and this is a one-year contract. We bring it every year, and this one ends, our current one ends at the end of September, and that's why we ask for it to be passed as an emergency, so we can have this in place by October 1st, when the next year begins.
Thank you, Chief. Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Beegan, thank you for the explanation, first of all, and the urgency and the timeliness of that. I appreciate that. And secondly, we just had an OVI checkpoint, if I remember correctly, just last weekend, I think it was?
Correct.
Nearby, okay.
Friday.
And I was just curious how successful, or if you knew that particular.
Yeah, so I was there at the checkpoint. Fortunately, unfortunately, however you want to say it, we did not get any OVIs, which is a good thing. But we did get a lot of vehicles that were traveling with unsecured children, shockingly high number of those, which is a very dangerous situation. So there was some definite benefit to the drivers and the children in the car, but we did not get any OVIs during that checkpoint.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Council, any further questions? Hearing none, I will assign item 149 of 2025 as ordinance 149 of 2025, and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor, finance director, and chief of police to enter into a memorandum of understanding in a contract between the Lucas County Sheriff's Office and the Oregon Police Division to participate in a countywide OVI task force to provide targeted enforcement activity into clearing an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Council.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 149 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Motion by Ms. Pauloff, second by Ms. Salander, or Ms., Mr. Salander, Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of council?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yea.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yea.
Mr. Drake?
Yea.
Mr. Horniak?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Ordinance 149 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays and zero nays. The next item on the agenda for consideration and passage is item 150 of 2025, presented by Mayor Seferian and our police chief, Brandon Beegan. Chief Beegan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is necessary to enter into a contract with Lucas County K-9 Control to provide on-call services for canines that are in the community that are unsecured, dangerous, and we need assistance from them and the housing of them once they, they capture that dog. We typically bring this as a one-year contract. They do have a new director at Lucas County K-9 Control, and he had reached out and asked for us to put it in as a three-year contract this time around, so we don't have to go through every year. The cost remained the same at $2,500 per year, that is for the Monday through Friday, normal business hours, services, and limited weekend hours. Anytime that we would have to call a dog warden outside of those hours, we would have to pay an additional fee to cover their expenses. to pay, um, an additional fee to cover their expenses. Um, it is twenty-five hundred dollars per year for three years. Um, like I said, there was no change from, from last year's.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Drake.
Uh, Chief Beegan, what would the cost be on top of that twenty-five hundred for each call-out, say, on the weekends, or how that works?
Um, Mr. President, um, so I don't have an exact number, but it's based off of a three-hour minimum call-out at a time and a half rate for the officer that comes out. So we're billed, um, for that, which is typical to what we have as well. If we have, um, a call-out, it's a minimum of three hours, um, at the time and a half rate for our officers.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Ms. Ackerman.
In Article One and under animal control, uh, in the information you gave us, uh, number five, I was, because that was a question I had, it said, the city shall pay the two thousand five hundred per year to cover the base cost of operating the service plus an amount based upon four hours of overtime pay for the canine care officer at the prevailing rate of pay, including, including actual extra costs to the county for fringe benefits created by the overtime service. Is, so is that a increase over?
Um, I would like to correct myself. I, I thought it was the three at time and a half, um, but you are correct. It is the four-hour, um, call-out, and it's based on whatever their, their current contract is for those officers.
And that's overtime? I know, I just thought that seemed like, I was like, where do you sign up for four hours of overtime mandatory plus, and, you know, actual cost, uh, or for fringe benefits? I, I've yet to ever see that in a contract, but.
Yeah. I apologize. I thought it was the three at time and a half.
No, that's okay. I thought there must be a change, but, um.
That's, yeah.
That's the counties.
Correct.
Yeah.
The counties.
So, he's, plus, yeah, so.
Yeah, so I apologize for that.
No, no, that's okay. I just thought, wow, four hours.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Uh, counsel, anything further?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hornet.
Um, i-if I may, Chief, uh, years past, I know a lot of times, between both the Park Rangers and even our police officers, if they had a stray dog, call it a friendly dog outside of hours, whatever it may be, a lot of times would utilize the kennels at Pearson Park, and then people would go retrieve their animals from Pearson Park. Do we still do that?
Um, Mr. President, uh, so we do not still do that at Pearson Park. Um, when we have a dog, a loose dog, we end up taking them either back here to the police department, if we can identify the owner, it's going to be a short period of time before they arrive, um, or if it's going to be an extended period of time. We have keys to Lucas County K-9 Control, and we can just drive the dog down there, we get them set up with a water bottle, um, or water dish, and we put them in there. There's no additional cost for us to do that.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hornet. Chief, thank you. Counsel, anything further?
Mr. President.
Um, Ms. Ackerman.
Uh, just one more thing. Uh, it said in there about the rabies immunization, that, um, Oregon, that they can cite people. How often do, I mean, it's ten dollars to cite someone for rabies immunization. How often do we do that?
So, again, Mr. President, um, I spoke with Melissa about this, um, or, or Law Director Pupura, um, and we don't believe that we've been getting charged ten dollars anytime that they issue a citation. We're not aware of anytime that they have done that.
Does it happen very frequently? I mean, when I was a kid, it was always the, the, the dog catcher, you know, the, that was doing that, but I, I didn't even realize that the city could, could cite people for...
Yeah, and they, it is in our municipal code. Um, they do typically do that. Our officers have as well. Um, but when they have done that for us, we have not received a ten-dollar charge per citation issued that we're aware of, even though it's in there that we could be the ten dollars.
Couldn't imagine it happening very often, but thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Counsel, if there is any, no further questions, I will assign item one fifty of twenty twenty-five as ordinance one fifty of twenty twenty-five and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director to enter into an agreement with the Board of Lucas County Commissioners to provide K-9 control services by Lucas County K-9 Care and Control for the term of January first, twenty twenty-six, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauliff.
I move for passage of ordinance one fifty of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Pauliff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. We have a motion by Ms. Paul, second by Mr. Salander. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Hornet?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance one fifty of twenty twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. Our next item on the agenda for consideration and passage is item number one fifty-one of twenty twenty-five. Uh, that also is being presented by Mayor Seferian and Police Chief Brandon Beegan. Chief Beegan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this ordinance is to allow for, um, our department and our city to put in for grant funding, um, for the, uh, Drug Use Prevention Grant through the state of Ohio. Um, we do this typically every year, um, and this is to do, um, DARE-type programs. We actually have moved over to, um, a different program that's similar to DARE, but it encompasses more, um, positive thinking and anti-bullying than the DARE program does. Um, we did ask for this as an emergency measure, because we are trying to, um, get it in past the grant deadline, um, and our officer who takes care of this did speak with the Attorney General's office, and they said, the sooner that we can get this in, the better. Um, and I did want to notate, we put in for, or if accepted, we would put in for nine hundred and fifteen total hours at the officer's, uh, base, base wage, um, for a total request of over twenty thousand dollars. Typically, we don't, uh, receive that full twenty thousand dollars. We usually get six to seven thousand dollars in grant funding to cover that. So I just wanted to notate, it's likely we will not, um, if the grant is accepted and awarded, we probably will not get the full twenty thousand dollars, but we'll get six to seven thousand.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, are there any additional questions on item, uh, one fifty-one of twenty twenty-five?
Mr. President.
Mr. Walensak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Beegan, um, on the, uh, applicant information, says due by May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Is that something you, you addressed? Mr. Roman said something in my ear, so I didn't, wasn't sure if that's what you were addressed or not.
Um, so I, I did address it. We are putting in, putting it in after the fact. Um, the officer who takes care of this put in the end-of-year reporting for last year.
Okay.
Um, and thought that she had submitted the new funding, or the new request, and realized that she did not actually submit that.
And thank you. I apologize. I have...
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Walensak. Counsel, anything further? Hearing none, I will assign item one fifty-one of twenty twenty-five as ordinance one fifty-one of twenty twenty-five and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Supporting the Ohio Attorney General's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Drug Use Prevention Grant Program application by the Oregon Police Division and authorizing and directing the mayor, finance director, and the chief of police to sign the grants award acceptance pursuant to the requirements of the Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Program Grant into clearing an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Pauliff.
I move for passage of ordinance one fifty-one of twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauliff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Uh, motion by Ms. Paul, second by Mr. Salander. Ms. Snyder, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Hornet?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance one fifty-one of twenty twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda for consideration is passing, and passage, is item number one fifty-two of twenty twenty-five, presented by Mayor Seferian and Finance Director Nick Roman. Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this ordinance is for, um, some supplemental appropriations. Um, I'll go through them. Uh, in the general fund, we have two. One is in the, um, administration office, and one is in the building and zoning, um, office, uh, and those two are both for, uh, salaries. Uh, one is due to OT in the building and zoning department, as well as a seasonal employee that's how, came in to help back up, uh, the secretary. The other one in the administrator's office, uh, is due to Sandy helping training, and then, uh, she's on vacation, and she also would, uh, help train as she was using vacation. Um, the next one is the street lighting one. Uh, this one, honestly, I, I missed when we, um, brought forward, uh, some streetlights that were being put in in neighborhoods. Uh, the developers pay us for the installation, and then we pay the, for the actual installation to happen. We should have had a appropriation in those ordinances that were brought forward earlier this year. We missed it, so we're coming forward now with this third-quarter appropriation. Um, the next one is in the streets department, um, it's actually sewer, but, uh, in streets, they had a Sammer Court, a sewer camera truck that, uh, has had a bunch of difficulties, and they needed to get fixed. They ended up going over their, uh, maintenance budget, so we just needed some additional funds there. Um, the last one is in the water distribution department, and that is due strictly to OT and seasonal workers that they had over the summer, and, um, they've just had a lot of OT. Um, and that's, this should help, uh, or get us through the end of the year. We should, hopefully, don't need anything in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Roman.
Thank you.
Uh, counsel. Hearing no questions or additional questions, I will assign item one fifty-two of twenty twenty-five as ordinance one fifty-two of twenty twenty-five and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing and directing the finance director to make supplemental appropriations and interfund and introfund transfers on an ad needs basis for fiscal year twenty twenty-five into clearing an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Hornet.
I move for passage of ordinance one fifty-two of twenty twenty-five as an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Hornet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Walensak. Thank you, Mr. Walensak. We have a motion by Mr. Hornet, second by Mr. Walensak. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Hornet?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you. Ordnance one fifty-two of twenty twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda for consideration and passage is item one fifty-three of twenty twenty-five, presented by Mayor Seferian and our Public Service Director, Paul Roman. Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to purchase, um, electronic remote transmitters, or ERTs, for the water distribution system. These are the devices that go on top of your meter, and when our meter reader drives by, they download the reads from each one of these meters. And, um, this system was originally installed in two thousand and four, and, uh, they do have a pretty long battery life, but in two thousand and twenty-two, we started hitting it hard and replacing them. Um, they do fail, and when they do fail, you, you, you do an average for the property owner until you can replace it. Um, but, you know, when there's catch-up bills and things like that, it, it can be a hassle, but, um, we've been, uh, they've been failing at a rate of about seventy ERTs per month. Um, we have bought a good number of them through the years, but we're asking, uh, to purchase another four hundred and thirty-two before the end of this year, um, and actually part of this ordinance. And, um, in two thousand and twenty-six, we'll also make a bigger request to, to order more. Um, reason for the emergency is really just to replace, uh, failed ERTs as soon as possible, and, uh, we really, over the next two years, would like to get them all replaced, so, um, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Drake.
Uh, Mr. Roman, what's the average, uh, life expectancy of those?
We were originally, uh, Mr. Mr. President, Mr. Drake, we were originally told that they would be like ten to fifteen years, but they've certainly gone a lot longer than that, and, uh, which is a good thing. Um, and, uh, I think the years that you really need, need to start replacing them were right when COVID started, and it was difficult to get through those years, so that's when in twenty-two, we really started hitting it hard, because then we could finally get into the homes and start replacing them. So, um, that's where we're at. I mean, you know, it's, again, Mary does a good job of ordering and try to get them replaced, but with lead service replacements and the water line breaks, it, it gets difficult to get these ERTs replaced. We actually started, um, getting, um, workers from the street department to help us and, uh, just trying to get as many people to help us do these things, and we appreciate it. Um, they are hurting, they, they do need more distribution maintenance workers, but, um, again, it's just trying to stay ahead of it and try to keep up with the fail rate, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Any additional questions, counsel? Hearing none, I will assign item one fifty-three of twenty twenty-five as ordinance one fifty-three of twenty twenty-five and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor, director of public service, and the finance director to issue purchase orders to United Systems and Software Incorporated, PO Box 54791, Southwest One Boulevard, Benton, Kentucky, for the purchase of electronic remote transmitters for the City of Oregon Water Distribution Division and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Salander.
I'd like to make a motion for passage of ordinance one fifty-three of twenty twenty-five as, as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Second by Ms. Pauliff. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Salander, second by Ms. Pauliff. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Hornet?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance one fifty-three of twenty twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda for consideration and passage is item, uh, number one fifty-four, presented by Mayor Seferian and our Public Service Director, Paul Roman. Mr. Roman.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to purchase a raw sewage pump for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, the pump, uh, that is in need of replacement is about eleven years old, but it is a workhorse pump, meaning it, it is continuously running. Uh, it's meant for the lower flows, and it's one of the main pumps that stays on, and a lot of times, with grit, these pumps get a lot of wear and tear, so, um, anyways, uh, so, as much as you could put this in the twenty twenty-six budget, we just feel that it may fail, uh, before then, and there is a sixteen-to-eighteen week, uh, delivery time, so we believe it's only prudent to order it as soon as possible, and, uh, we do have money in the budget to, uh, cover this cost as well, so, um, but happy to answer any questions on it.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Hearing no questions, uh, I will assign item one fifty-four of twenty twenty-five as ordinance one fifty-four of twenty twenty-five and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director to issue a purchase order to Baker and Associates LTD, one nine four two five, County Highway Four, Cary, Ohio, for the purchase of a KSB LTD 19425, County Highway 4, Cary, Ohio, for the purchase of a KSB model KRT K200 402/R606 XNGK submersible 3100 GPM wet pump to be used by the wastewater treatment plant and the Department of Public Service in an amount not to exceed $56,848.80 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Was that Mr. Salander? Yeah, Mr. Salander.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for passage of ordinance 154 of 2025 as an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Salander.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pauloff. We have a motion by Mr. Salander and a second by Ms. Pauloff. Ms. Snyder, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 154 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. Our last item on the agenda for tonight is item for consideration and passage is item number 155 of 2025 presented by Mayor Seferian and City Administrator, Joe Major. Mr. Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is necessary for the city to sign off on a liquor license trex application for Harvest, which is the name of the business. This is, the location is the former shed, which is located at 2701 Navarre Avenue. So liquor licenses are handled by the Department of Commerce, and every city is limited to how many liquor licenses they can have in a jurisdiction. It's based on population, but the trex process allows a liquor license to be transferred from, that is available in another jurisdiction, to be transferred to our jurisdiction. So the application process goes through the Department of Commerce. They review it and approve it, but what Harvest would like to do is transfer a D1 and D2 permit to this location. D1 and D2s are for beer, D1 is for beer sales and consumption on site if they're in their original container, and D2 is for wine and mixed drinks in their original containers, and they can be consumed on site as well, so for Cary or onsite consumption. So Harvest is a specialty beer and wine sales company, and they have a deli as a part of their business, so very popular place in Holland, Ohio. If you haven't been to their location, it's at the, it's near the corner of Albin Road and Airport Highway. So that's all I have, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Counsel, any additional questions or questions for Mr. Major?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Pauloff?
So there's, is, is this a different way of doing it? Is this how it's done now? There's no, there's no hearings or anything? Or is this something totally different from transfers?
Mr. President. Mrs. Pauloff, so this is the application that has to go to the Department of Commerce to trex a permit in. There has to be a signature by a city official for the application to go to the Department of Commerce. So that's why the request for legislation now to allow for that, for the mayor to be able to sign that application.
Right, when we dealt, I'm sorry, when we dealt with liquor permits before, it always went through a hearing, so that is why I got a little confused if this was a different way they're doing it.
And Mr. President, Mrs. Pauloff, there still will be a chance for a hearing at a later date. This is just the beginning process to have a permit trexed in.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniac.
Mr. Major, I think just following up on what Ms. Pauloff was asking about, if the liquor license is transferred within the City of Oregon from the previous owner to the new owner of the liquor license, that would be where we denote whether we request a hearing or not.
Correct.
Because this, in essence, our liquor licenses in the City of Oregon are full, they have to bring a liquor license in from outside of our community, and that's what this trex allows to have happen.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Major. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Thank you, Mr. Major. Counsel, any further questions? Hearing none, I will sign item 155 of 2025 as ordinance 155 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the transfer of a trex economic development transfer liquor license into the City of Oregon for KM Baumgartner &amp; Ohio Limited Liability Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 155 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wallensack. We have a motion by Mr., Ms. Pauloff, a second by Mr. Wallensack. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you. Ordinance 155 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. Having considered all items on the agenda for this evening, we will now move into the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a correspondence first from the Oregon Fire and Rescue, and I'd ask counsel's concurrence in accepting the resignation of Abigail Zunk of Part-Time Fire effective September 3, 2025, and I'd ask counsel's concurrence in that acceptance.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Pauloff.
I move to concur with the mayor's acceptance of the resignation of Abigail Zunk from the, as a part-time firefighter to paramedic from the Fire Department effective September 3, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Counsel, any objections? Hearing none, mayor, counsel concurs.
And next, from the Parks and Recreation, and this is a pay increase from classification one step two to classification three step one, Isabel Vrieslar, step one, 1525 an hour, and ask counsel's concurrence, and effective date, September 9, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniac. I'm sorry, Mr. Wallensack.
I move to concur with the mayor's reclassification of Isabel Vrieslar to concession shift supervisor, classification three, step one.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. We have, counsel, any objections? Hearing none, mayor, counsel concurs.
And that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Roland Food Market is this coming Wednesday. It's the last one of the year before Honey Fest, which is on the September 20th, and also I'll be able to attend the rolling market because the 911 cog meeting has been canceled for September, but I do have a copy of the budget that was approved if anybody wants to see it, so just let me know. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Ms. Pupora.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pupora. Mr. Roman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Horniac.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have something I want to share this evening from my committee of the Economic Development Committee for the City of Oregon. I believe previously electronically and tonight physically at everybody's place, you should have received a copy of a letter we received from Craig Elbers, who is the newly elected president of the Oregon Economic Development Foundation. I've been asked to read this this evening, just to make sure that we share this with all members and so that it's kind of with all of us and it's read into us, into a meeting as well, so I'd like to do that now. The letter starts with, "Mayor Seferian and members of council, on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Oregon on the Bay Regional Economic Development Foundation, the foundation, we are compelled to address ongoing concerns regarding participation, representation, and foundation activities. The foundation is governed by both its bylaws and the formal agreement with the City of Oregon, which establishes clear roles, responsibilities, and communication structures. For the integrity of this partnership, these documents must be respected. Number one, the city foundation agreement. The agreement approved by council designates the foundation as the city's focal point for economic development. Among its provisions, it requires: single points of contact. To maintain professional communication, the foundation's one point of contact will be the director. The director will officially interact with the city's one point of contact, the city administrator. Any official questions, comments, suggestions, concerns, et cetera, should be routed through the agreed point of contact. Delivery of services. These include business retention and attraction, CRA, TIF, work, legislative monitoring, community partnerships, and an annual IRS Form 990 as the CPA Prepared Report. Land account reporting. If managed by the foundation, semi-annual summaries are provided to the city administrator and city economic development committee. By design, communication is structured solely between the foundation's executive director and the city administrator. Any attempt by other city officials or council members to bypass this structure undermines the agreement. Number two, foundation bylaws. The bylaws are equally clear regarding representation. Article 3, Section 4 to 7, city-appointed trustees. The City of Oregon shall be entitled to three seats on the Board of Trustees, which shall be appointed by the mayor and approved by city council. These seats are currently filled by the mayor, the city administrator, and one city council representative. No other city officials or council members hold standing within the foundation. Article 3, Section 6C, membership and expulsion. Any member may be expelled by a two-thirds vote of the Executive Board of Directors after proper notice and an opportunity for a hearing. This applies only to members, non-members, including council members who are not one of the three appointees, have no membership rights, no standing, no authority to attend or participate in foundation meetings. Number three, protecting the partnership. The foundation's trustees are committed community and business leaders who volunteer their time and expertise to serve Oregon. Their work is rooted in transparency, compliance, and community benefit. To maintain trust with investors, partners, and residents, adherence to the agreement and bylaws is essential. Conclusion, the foundation board affirms that only the three official city employees, mayor, city administrator, and one council member designated by the mayor and council have standing to represent the city within the foundation. The agreement requires a professional communication exclusively between the executive director and the city administrator. Any participation beyond these structures violates both the agreement and the bylaws. We respectfully request that the city council formally acknowledge that only the three appointed city representatives have standing within the foundation, reinforce compliance with the agreement's communication framework, support the foundation's ability to fulfill its mission without unauthorized interference. Sincerely, Craig A. Elbers, Board President of the Oregon on the Bay Regional Economic Development Foundation." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Excuse me, Mrs. Pauloff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Mr. Wallensack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack. Ms. Ackerman.
Mr. President, for the public, just in case you're wondering what this whole, the need for the OEDF announcement, it's me. It was me. No, seriously, I stood up in a, no one told me that I was forbidden to attend OEDF meetings. I had attended them several times previously. There were other members of the public there that were not there to hear the speaker. It's me that's not allowed to say anything, talk to anyone. I do have to ask, oh, by the way, Ms. Pupora has a copy of my sworn affidavit that contrary to Ms. Pauloff, Councilwoman Pauloff and the OEDF director, I am not the fictitious Jeremy Hawkins on social media. If anybody needs to see that, Melissa has, Ms. Pupora has a copy of it. I am confused by this statement because it says that Joel is the portal to the OEDF mystery, and then it also says that council has appointed, or the mayor, the city administrator, and one council representative is, so do you have to, does the mayor and Mr. Horniac, do you have to speak to Joel to go through the portal to speak to someone at OEDF? Or are you allowed to talk to members of the OEDF? Or is it just Joel? Because it's kind of conflicted language in here. Mr. Major, I assume?
Mr. Major.
Ms. Ackerman, thank you, Mr. President. You know, we all communicate as we need to, and, you know, everybody, between the mayor and Mr. Horniac and I, when we need to communicate about certain matters regarding the OEDF, we handle it.
So there are four of you that are the three?
We just have, we got a good working relationship between the three of us to be able to handle any communications with the OEDF.
Okay, so if you want to know anything as the public about, I will go directly to you. I will not go through them because they do not represent me, have my back, your back when it comes to matters of ethics, ethics violations, and I'm glad that they clarified that, so I can, I know how to proceed going forward. Why, yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes, sir.
Please, no accusations.
It's, there's plenty of evidence for it. I think this tells you right there that there was something that occurred, but thank you.
Absolutely, but no accusations against others up here. Thank you.
They're not blind.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Pauloff.
I would like to know when I, I don't remember accusing you of being anybody. I really don't.
I'll submit it, I'll submit it, all of the records of you commiserating with Ms. Bennett, that I am indeed Jeremy Hawkins, fictitious Jeremy Hawkins. I think it's, which caused me a lot of attack by your people, her people.
My people.
And.
Mr. President?
No, don't, you know, that's my, you asked a question.
I was given the floor, but you interrupted me. And what happened over the weekend, when that happened, I was out of town. They reached out to me. I looked at it, and quite frankly, it's an embarrassment to this city. It's a big embarrassment. Your affidavit can say, yeah, you didn't make up any fake ones, yeah, whatever, but do you know who the person is that is portraying Jeremy Hawkins? Do you know that person? That's the question.
Isn't that, no, I do not. Do you, can you sign an affidavit saying that you have never created a fake profile on social media?
If I have something to say, I'm going to say it directly to you. I do not need to hide behind a fake Facebook.
That's exactly how I feel about it.
I don't. If I'm going to say it, I say it.
Why did you accuse me of being Jeremy Hawkins?
I say it with kindness. I say it professionally.
Condescendingly.
Well, I think you need to look in the mirror when you're talking about condescension. Thank you.
Mrs. Paul, continue with your report if you would. Mrs. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have had some people ask to move the time of the tree commission to a time that actually works for people that work eight to five, but we have the planning commission meeting right after at 5 o'clock, so, but moving forward, I think there's enough interest to move it to a evening, maybe even 6 o'clock, I'm not sure, but if anyone else is interested in having a later time, so, you know, 4 o'clock in the afternoon is, it's great for retirees and, you know, people with flexible schedules, but there are a lot of people interested in increasing the tree canopy in Oregon that would like to be involved, so we're going to look at a later time going forward. I think, I think you covered Honey Fest, Mr. Major. You want to go, yeah, why don't you tell us a little more about it? Because I know that was pretty short.
Mr. President, Ms. Ackerman, thanks for bringing that up. It is September 20th, and it is the annual Honey Fest, third annual, in fact. So it's, we've got a lot of, you know, it's live music, a lot of honey vendors, a bee beard, a cutest baby contest, a dress your dog up contest, cutest bumble dog contest, kids pie eating contest, a lot of kids' activities, very family-friendly, but with live music. Also, we have, we do have the beers and meads like we did last year, so there's a lot to do for everybody. But real interesting, though, if you haven't seen a bee beard in real life, in person, it's very intense, it's a very, it's a good. It is kind of horrifying, too, yes. They take a queen bee in a vial, you wear it on a necklace, and the hive swarms the queen and crawls up the person's face, so that's, it's very interesting, and there's a, there's a lot of education there, too, so there'll be a lot of educational booths that, we didn't have as many last year because of scheduling conflicts. The first year we had them, though, they were actually a really big hit and very informational. A lot to do there, so hope to see a lot of people there.
Mr. Major, could you give the location again?
Yes, yes, sorry about that. Star Extension, the Sackerfield side. It'll be, what is that, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman?
I just want to mention that I gave Joel a jar of the late William Crawford, who passed away here in Oregon on an unfortunate accident. I gave him a jar of his honey. I'm hoping we can do a blind submission into the, and then send the results to his family, but I also wanted to say, I think Mr. Crawford, from talking to the representatives of the company that he had for the apiary, they are amazing people, and even though it was a tragic accident, they firmly believe that it would, you know, they don't want it to affect the person, the other person involved in the accident, they don't want to see more than, you know, another life ruined, so they seem, they're very gracious and a pretty amazing Mennonite family. But I know Mr. Major talked about having a little bit of a nod to him and the bee keeper profession during the Honey Fest, so I'm looking forward to that, or memorializing someone in that community, but that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing from my standing committee, just a couple of quick things that I know that I will be there. It'll be a good time, so I hope you'll be there, too. there, too. But secondly, the Harvest you were mentioning, too, I have had a chance to go out there and check that out a few times. And if you do get a chance, go check it out, because, I mean, it's going to be really good here. I really do think so. They, their deli, you get a huge sandwich. It's got a half pound of meat on it. And so it's very, very good. I didn't get a chance to try any of the beers or anything because those on work lunch, but definitely, it's going to do well, I think, in that location and in our, our community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Mr. Drake.
Nothing from my committee. I just wanted to point out to Mr. Horniac, the OEDF meetings, early on, when I first got on council, I remember going to those meetings. I think primarily they were at St. Charles. So I didn't realize, you know, nobody ever said anything to me that I could or couldn't go. So you're saying you can't. So I just, I wanted to clear that up and just mention that. And that's fine. I can go by rules. And then the other thing, for Mr. Roman, I've had a few citizens on East Morland Boulevard, the old part and the new part, both sides of Wheeling. Some of the fixtures down at the bottom, there's, they literally put duct tape, or duct tape, but electrical tape around it. And a lot of the citizens are, yeah, the light poles down at the bottom, and they're worried. It's been like that for a while, I know, on the east side. So I didn't know if you could make sure they could put proper covers on, you know, they don't want a kid or anything to get in there and get electrocuted. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniac, was that you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just want to address that. Mr. Drake, I merely wrote the letter, or read the letter that they sent over. My experience has always been the same. I think what they're trying to do is just establish the communication points. I think because there seemed to be whatever it was at the last meeting, they just wanted to identify that. I don't believe that I heard a, nobody's allowed to tend to it, because in my experience, usually in election years, those meetings get pretty popular in September and October, right before the election, for elected officials and those on the ballot. So I know they always have it in years past. They've done chili competitions and brownie competitions for candidates. So we can clarify that. I think what the new president was trying to do is just establish kind of his expectations moving forward of protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I have nothing from my standing committee, other than Mr. Horniac. We did, I did give a copy to Ms. Snyder to put it into the record for us. So just to let you know. With that being said, I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pauloff. Any objections? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.